Good evening. It is Tuesday, February 18th, 2025, in the meeting of City Council of Lewisville, Colorado. Can we get a roll call?
Mayor Parton Dickinson.
Here.
Councilmember Fahey.
Here.
Mayor Lay.
Here.
Councilmember Cooperman.
Here.
Councilmember Hefner.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
All right. Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. We are ready for public comments and items not on the agenda and items on the consent agenda. If you are interested in making public comments on either one of those topics, please fill out a card and provide it to the city clerk, who's at the end of the dais here. She'll call your name if you're online, if you could indicate with a, excuse me, raised hand. She'll call on you as well. This is a time when you can say virtually anything you like, up to three minutes per person, six minutes if there is somebody who you can point to in the room or online who will cede their time to you. You don't have to spend three minutes speaking. You don't have to spend six minutes speaking. But we want to make sure that everybody is accommodated, if we can. If you refrain from clapping or booing or otherwise calling out, I'd appreciate it. It's a little easier for people who've never been here to feel comfortable standing and talking. We want to hear from as many of you as we, as want to come up to the podium. If you come up to the podium, state your name and where you're from. You don't have to give your address, just what city you're from. So do we have anybody who would like to make public comment?
First will be Christian Dino, to be followed by Claire McLean.
My name's Christian Dino, Lewisville, Colorado. Mayor Lay, members of Lewisville City Council. It's with a mix of frustration and disappointment that I submit my resignation as Chair of the Building Code Board of Appeals effective immediately. Over the past four to five years, I have been honored to serve on the board, contributing hundreds of volunteer hours to the city of Lewisville. During this time, the board has reviewed and provided input on numerous significant matters, including the adoption of the 21 International Energy Conservation Code and related amendments. However, it has become increasingly clear that the contributions and expertise of the board are neither valued nor utilized in a meaningful way. Consistently, staff have presented documents to City Council under the pretense of having incorporated our board's input, while most, if not all, of our comments and recommendations have been disregarded. I have raised this concern repeatedly with the mayor and City Council, only to be met with assurances that the issue would be addressed in the next round of reviews, yet this pattern continues unchanged. As Albert Einstein once said, "The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results." Unfortunately, this encapsulates my experience on the board. Despite my willingness to dedicate time away from work and family to serve the city, it is disheartening to realize that our collective expertise, representing over a century of experience in the construction industry, has not been effectively leveraged to benefit Lewisville. Serving on the Building Code Board of Appeals should be an opportunity to ensure that the voices of experienced professionals are reflected in the city's codes and policies. However, the consistent dismissal of our input undermines the purpose of this board and diminishes the value of the time and effort put forth by its members. I remain deeply committed to the betterment of Lewisville and hope that in the future, the city will find ways to better engage and respect the expertise of its advisory boards. Thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you, Christian. And thank you for your show.
Next is Chris Allred, to be followed by Claire McLean.
Good evening, council. Hi, my name is Chris Allred, resident of Longmont and commenting for Rocky Mountain Peace and Justice Center. Good to see you again. It's always a joy to visit Lewisville, often enjoy stopping by to enjoy some of the local restaurants or see friends, take care of a dog, of an old friend of mine who's a grassroots organizer. I'm just returning here from two weeks ago to follow up on a request to pass a resolution to oppose recreation at Rocky Flats or to oppose construction of the Rocky Mountain Greenway. And this is following up from last week. On Monday, February 10th, the town of Superior passed this resolution, opposing the Rocky Mountain Greenway unanimously. And they showed great leadership, I believe, with this decision. Many comments were heard from members of the Board of Trustees who understand this issue very well and have been studying this for years. They've been a leader on this for many years. And I'd just like to read a couple of statements real quick from the resolution. Whereas the operational and safety practices of Rocky Flats, including fires at the facility, resulted in environmental problems, including ground contamination from plutonium, beryllium, and murexium and other hazardous substances, both within and outside the plant area. Whereas moving forward with the construction of the Rocky Mountain Greenway Trail and the Refuge raises serious environmental health and safety concerns due to contaminated soils, sediment, groundwater, airborne particles, and surface water from the presence of hazardous chemicals and radioactive constituents. Now therefore, the town hereby opposes the construction of the Rocky Mountain Greenway Trail through the Refuge and its connection to other regional trails. So I would ask, please, if the council here would just consider using this as a template for passing a resolution. This is backed up by scientific evidence, in addition to community support. I followed up by email with a report from Dr. Ketterer, who studied air monitoring downwind of Rocky Flats last spring and still discovered airborne particles of plutonium. Also, I would ask that please consider doing this at the next meeting in two weeks, because Boulder County will have a study session on March 6th. So our timeline is we're hoping to be rallying support from local governments before that goes before Boulder County. And this will help to show more solidarity in the community, different cities within Boulder County, to give more encouragement to the county to do the right thing. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Next is Claire McLean.
Taking a breath. My name's Claire, and I just moved here last year. I'm helping with the Chamber of Commerce. I love Lewisville. I moved here because my granddaughter and daughter live here. And I lived here 12 years ago when there was no building out by Rocky Flats. And I was like, well, there's not even signage that this existed there. And I've become very concerned to even drive down Indiana. She lives, my granddaughter, lives part-time with her dad, near Candleless, and part-time with my daughter. And so I started getting involved, and I went to see Half-Life: Of Memory, that, if you know about the Cold War horse, the guy that built that in honor of the facility and all of the workers that worked there, Jeff Geip, produced this movie. It's a documentary. I was at the dairy last week, sold out, three different shows. It's going to be at the Colorado Environmental Film Festival on February the 23rd. And I just couldn't sit still. I'm like, I don't understand how this could possibly have ever gotten this far, to build, to possibly build a greenway, like people walking and taking their dogs and hiking on top of a nuclear power facility that was busted in the 1980s, I think. And it was literally, if you read about it, covered up by what was called a superfan, which was a quick fix, you know? It should have taken years and years. But, you know, if you cover it up, you can't see it. And then if you put grass there, then everybody thinks it's gorgeous. It is gorgeous. It is. It's open space, and it's amazing. I am so concerned, you guys, for the health, not only of my granddaughter that lives downwind, because you know about the winds on 93. When it blows, you don't even want to be on that road. Think of all the topsoil that goes into the homes and into all of the facilities, not only the water supply as well. And I have just started on this because I'm concerned about people being on this property. And I care tremendously about stopping this. There has been signage put up. There is no signage that tells people, well, this used to be the Rocky Flats. Go out there and look. There's nothing. There's been signage put up, but it's been taken down. So there are so many people, I've talked to a lot of people, I was like, do you know about Rocky Flats? There's so many new people moving into Colorado. They don't even know about Rocky Flats. So please consider, I mean, I'm, I met with Chris today. I'm like, what can I do? I need to do something. And the main thing is to just oppose and jump on board. Lewisville is way ahead. This is why I live here. You guys are amazing. This is an amazing town. It's environmental. And I know that's why I live here. So please, please jump on board and do what Superior did and Brimfield and Westminster. Westminster wouldn't support it. Thank you so much. And we have these flyers, if anybody wants one, that Rocky Mountain Peace and Justice has made.
Why don't you give them to the clerk, and she can? We need to have one posted.
Next is Monica. I'm sorry, I can't read the last name.
Oh, Ramona.
Go ahead.
Thank you so much. Hi, so I am a therapist in downtown Lewisville, and I'm sure you're probably aware that they're opening microhealing centers for plant medicine. So I have done an intensive, year-long program, and I would like to offer those services. I'm right on 908 Main Street. So I'm asking the council to consider amending the present rules, to amend the ordinance so that we could, rather than doing property line, we could look at the pedestrian walking. I'm on the third floor. I've been in the community for 24 years. I'm a therapist. I would love to offer this to, you know, the community. Right now, I think I'm about 100 feet in noncompliance. So, right? Is that right? Yeah. So I had spoken to Matt. We talked about it. I would like to not have to get a whole new office. Really, what I'd be doing is I'd be working with really midlife women and older. I've been working in the community with families for many years, as I said. So really, it's a very small margin. I don't have it all measured out. But basically, you need to be 1,000 feet from daycare and school. So I'm in compliance with the middle school, and I think there's just, because of how it's measured, again, I'm about 100 feet. And so I'm asking that we could consider that. I don't know what the process is for that, but I'd like to really offer a microhealing center. It would be very safe. This would not be something that would really be disruptive to the community. There's been a lot of requests for it as well, so. How does this, do I ask questions? I'm not really sure. I've never done a meeting like this before, so I don't really know what I'm doing.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, if you've never been up here. Since this is not on the agenda.
Oh, sure.
We can't respond to it.
Oh, okay.
One of the things you can do is to talk to the planning department. I can say that.
Okay.
And often we'll direct people.
Okay.
And I would suggest you talk to the interim city manager.
And I sent out a letter, I think, to all the council members. You know, I'd love information on how to do this whole process correctly.
If you talk to the city manager, that'd be great.
Sounds good.
But thank you.
So it's just on the record, and then we'll take next question after that?
Yes.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No? Okay. Thank you to all those who spoke. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right. Council informational comments and committee reports. Do we have any tonight? Two things. One is, we did not have a quorum at the EVC meeting last week, because two of us were sick. But we are going to have that meeting at 1:30 on Friday. So that would be posted, but I just wanted to make sure people knew about it. We'll try again on that. The second thing is, I was in a meeting on, yeah, it was last week. Actually, Rob Zaccaro, the Community Development Director, and I spoke to a couple of people from the governor's office who are working on rail issues. And there'll be more about this, but there is an attempt to consolidate both the Front Range Rail and the Northwest Passenger Rail. We're in the Northwest Passenger Rail track. And the idea is that the governor is going to try to obtain the authorization to take some of the money that we have all been paying into the FastTrax tax for a long, long time and potentially route it to three stations, one in Westminster, one in Brimfield, one in Lewisville. There's a lot of questions to be asked and answered, but I just wanted to pass that along because it's something we'll talk about in more detail as details become a little clearer. We all would like to see more than we have seen from RTD, given all of the money that we have put into that tax over a long period of time, and a lot of resources that our city has put into, in the infrastructure, to try to make our city ready for that if and when it comes. Let's see. Any city managers report tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple items. I want to highlight that our water team was recently highlighted in an AP article regarding fires and water systems. So thank you to the team for all that you do and continue to share with everyone. And also, thank you, council, for being thoughtful in allowing new systems like remote shut-off valves that will help us in the future be more resilient. I want to highlight, we had a successful skate with a cop program with Officer Adams and about 10 kids. It's great to see them out there. And this Friday at 7:00 PM, you can come to our World Music Series at the Lewisville Arts Center. The focus is Brazil. Thank you.
That's terrific. Thanks. Our first item of regular business is Discussion and Direction, Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport Task Force update. And just one bit about what discussion and direction is. We don't do this all the time, but discussion and direction is not where council makes a decision, but we provide an opportunity for, first, a presentation by council and then, or by staff, and then a chance for us to talk a little bit with one another, and then to provide some direction, some ideas for staff as to what the next step might be. So with that, do we have a presentation from staff?
Mayor, there's no formal presentation. The council communication that was in the packet for tonight's meeting gives an overview of the meetings that the task force has had and what we would like for you to discuss tonight.
The two people on the task force from council are Councilmember Hefner and Councilmember Kern. And perhaps I can turn to Councilmember Hefner for a little bit of a thumbnail sketch of where we are.
Thanks, Mayor. So back in November, we all talked about airport issues, and the decision coming out of that meeting was for Councilmember Kern and myself to form a task force with the city attorney to look at what, if anything, we might do to, A, gather some better, more objective facts about the number of flights, the frequency of flights, where they're flying, how high they're flying, so on, sort of get some objective data. I think in our last meeting, we had all recognized that we're somewhat for want of understanding as to what the facts are in terms of something quantifiable. Obviously, we've all heard from many unhappy residents about the disruption to their daily activities from the flight schools and other overflights of their homes and businesses. So part one was to, what might we do to gather some more objective facts? And then part two was, how do we get some better, or at least more comprehensive, legal advice on sort of options as to us as the city of Lewisville? What steps can we take? And in contrast, what steps can't we take to address an airport that is not within our jurisdiction, isn't under our control, and is in large part under the control of the Federal Aviation Administration, which we have very, very little influence over? And so as presented in the staff memo, we have very fortunately identified a Lewisville resident with the appropriate expertise, who's in fact presented to council before on some of the data analytics around how many flights, how high, so on, who is willing to help us gather that information again. And better yet, he's willing to do it on a volunteer basis. I know we had investigated sort of third-party vendors to do that, and they seem to be quite expensive. So we are fortunate to have, as always, fortunate to have volunteers within the city who are willing to help. And then the second piece is, the city attorney has identified an outside lawyer who might better help us understand the jurisdictional framework, sort of what are the levers available and not available to us in terms of influencing the airport. And so our proposal, I think, to you, and then there's some questions, but I think our proposal is move forward with the resident with the relevant sort of computer expertise and data expertise, and move forward with the outside attorney, who can give us both a written memo and as well as a presentation on sort of the legal background. So the question is whether to move forward with that, and then if the answer to that is yes, are there particular items you'd like us to pose, either in terms of data or legal advice, that would be helpful to this group? So I will see if my fellow task force members have anything to add to that summary.
I actually think that was well stated, and I appreciate you saving me the voice. So no. Just if there is anything specific that you want from us for us to include with some final version. The data that is included in the packet is many years old. And so I think one of the things that we identified was the need to compare the old data to concurrent information, so we can really understand what's happening over Lewisville airspace.
Others on council? Have any questions, concerns? I had a question. Is the intention of, and this may be directed to the city attorney, is the intention that the analysis by council would be privileged and sent to you for that purpose? Would it be, or to us for that purpose? Or would it be presented to council in open session?
What we've talked about at the task force level is this would be a public presentation. It is not information that would be prepared for litigation purposes. And, you know, we felt like the information would be very helpful to residents in the community as well.
Yeah, I think that's great. I know that there's a lot of residents who are very interested in this. I know that when we proceed in public on this, I think it'd be very helpful. So I'm all for that. Yeah, Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you. So, well, first of all, to my fellow council members and our city attorney, thank you for your work on this task force. In my experience attending the RMA/MMA meetings, there was the concern about flight traffic. And then there was also a concern about lead pollution, which that particular body was not open to, well, I shouldn't say the body. The airport was not open to discussing because it was not within the scope of the body, according to the airport. So I'm curious, the individuals that you've been having conversations with, do they have any expertise in that aspect of flight?
I'm happy to jump in. So the gentleman who, the resident who is volunteering to help us pull together the flight data is using data that comes from the aircraft that's transmitted from them. So it's strictly flight data information. It's not from the environmental perspective. But as a point to the public, all airports are all, in the whole country, are going to have to move to unleaded aviation, they call it avgas, aviation gas. It's not jet fuel. It's avgas, right, for these little planes, by 2030. And Rocky Mountain is on track to meet that deadline, if not convert to fully unleaded prior to that date. There's also evidence that came about from work done in Superior that aircrafts above a certain altitude, like 300 feet above ground or 500 feet above ground, the dispersal of the lead is very minimal as far as once it reaches the ground and its impact to health. And we have, all of our flights would be at about 500 feet or above in their approach or in their climb out of Rocky Mountain. So it would really put us out of the scope of what is considered scientifically in a range of concern anyway, for the city, within the city limits.
Remember Hefner?
Yeah, I would just say, I think it's an important topic, and thank you for that summary. I think we should try and include it in whatever sort of our next written work product is, back to the full council, at least include that, the summary information that Councilmember Kern just shared.
Thanks. Yes, council member?
The other thing I'd like to see included is not just the frequency of flights, but also their altitude when they're going over the city.
Good point. Anyone else? Councilmember Cooperman?
Thanks. Sorry. A couple of things I wanted to bring up. One, I understand that, I don't know exactly how it's arranged, but in Superior, they've been doing some noise monitoring recently to actually get a better handle on what noise is impacting them. I don't know if it's through the town or if it's just been set up by residents or what. But I don't know if either of you have heard about that, or if you have any idea about the possibility for extending that to Lewisville.
I'm certainly not familiar, but we can add that to our list.
Yeah. I'm familiar with Superior doing it. They are specifically doing it in certain parks and paths that are in the flight pattern. It's not like they're doing it on the northern side of town. They're doing it at the most impacted, where the flights are at their lowest. I think one of, we can definitely include it, but one of the main things we were looking at, as Councilmember Fahey pointed out, is altitude, to make sure that all aircraft are actually in FAA compliance.
And then another, maybe a question. Is it fair to inquire more into the recommended special counsel, like who the person is, what their experience is at the moment, or is that reasonable?
I don't have that information at my fingertips, but I'll pull it up if you want to continue your discussion.
Okay, great. And, okay, so another thing, this is, I don't know, not, well, I guess it's relevant. So the airport is finally getting ready to do a Part 150 noise study. As I understand, they're going to have an advisory board as part of that study, but at the moment, they are not planning to include any representation from Louisville. So I'm interested in basically asking the airport to include us. My impression is that they're not actually looking for elected officials to be on this advisory board, but rather concerned residents, and that there are residents from some of the other surrounding communities who will be serving. I don't know what others think about that idea, but I think, you know, given the impacts that we have and the interest from our residents, I think there would be someone who would probably be interested in serving on that and informing that study.
Is that something that is likely to happen? I guess, sort of, I don't know when that is scheduled to get underway, that is, the committee that is advising?
Yeah, I think it's actively being put together at the moment, is my understanding.
Because it would seem to me that the timing of that may be different from the timing of the memo. I don't, I don't know.
At a minimum, we can probably find out what the criteria is. It actually may be somewhat like neighboring municipalities that may be included versus like beyond. So there may be like specific requirements, but we can certainly look at that and see.
Anything else, Councilmember Cooperman?
So I'm looking on the Louisville website, and it's dated, but I think many of us are aware of the 2019 partnership with Superior on the noise study. And there are some survey responses that are posted here, a summary of them from residents, and it might be worth just looking through these responses to see if there's anything we're not thinking of right now that might be of interest to those folks that live in Louisville. One of the things that just pops to mind is like the type of plane seems to be of concern. So I'll just leave it at that. That might be a resource for us to think about if we haven't looked at it already.
Okay. The, there's one statute that I think was passed last spring. It was a bill carried by Representative Kyle Brown, who was formerly a member of this body. It concerned the lead fuel issue, and that might be worthwhile to include. I, based on what I have known so far, I think it's really important to get that attorney's take on what levers we have and what levers we don't have before we do a huge amount of work. If there's limitations on us, all the information in the world may not help us to resolve this in much detail. But I, you know, I don't know, do we have a sense of how soon we can get that attorney on board?
She is just waiting to hear from us if we're ready to move forward with her, and her name is Margaret Martin, and she's with the firm Thompson Burton that is in the Nashville, Tennessee area. And she has represented airports, and she has represented or worked with municipalities who are in the vicinities of airports. She's actually done some consulting work for, I think it was Westminster, regarding Rocky Mountain Municipal Airport, so, or Metropolitan Airport. So she is familiar with the airport. And I guess, you know, I can give you a full bio if council wants to consider an engagement with her, but that's just sort of the high level of her experience.
You know, the task force is tasked with that, so I don't know that we need to provide any more input, as long as you all are comfortable with attorney that's being talked about. Councilmember Kern?
So our intention was to bring the current flight data, the newest flight data that we were able to obtain, to the meeting along with the attorney information, so that you could digest all of that together, instead of listening to the attorney and then having another meeting with information. That way you would have all of it right there, you know, in advance. That was our intention, was to wait to bring the attorney in before we had that data for you, thinking that was the most efficient way to spend our time.
Okay.
I think maybe the one exception to that is when we get her engaged, assuming that's the direction, we will check in on the Part 150 study, and if there's sort of more timely items that we need to consider, we will bring those to you as soon as we can.
Yeah. So instead of discharging the task force, it sounds like we need to keep you going to kind of follow up. But it sounds like we have consensus about engaging council, and I think we've talked about the various issues that are important to include in the analysis. I mean, we talked about the issues around what we can, can't do as a city that does not control the airport, that we're concerned about, and for concerns about lead, and we've heard concerns about the Part 150 study, yeah, on noise levels, and we've heard comments about getting the flight data from the resident who's done it in the past. Are there other things?
Mayor, do you want to take public comment?
We need to take public comment, yeah. Are there other, okay. Well, so far, we've probably
I just add one more thing. I just do want to emphasize the goal here is to create both a public meeting and a public document summarizing our work, both in terms of data and the legal analysis, which I don't think is going to be, I mean, it will be specific to Louisville, but I don't think it will reveal any really confidential secrets about Louisville. I mean, it's going to be sort of a recitation of what the law is. And my sincere hope is that it gives us a much stronger foundation to have the conversation around the airport, because it is a complex set of legal rules. One of the things we did as part of this process is listen to, and I know I've sent it to some of you, listened into a Longmont City Council meeting where they got legal advice on their own airport that they do control, about how limited their authority is to do stuff around noise and low-flying planes and the like, and that basically the FAA is in charge. And despite the fact that the Longmont City Council seemed to be interested in mitigating some of the noise impacts, their attorneys seem to be telling them, look, your options here are really pretty narrow, and I suspect we will get similar advice from outside council that this is a difficult area, primarily controlled by federal law. And I think it'll be really helpful for all of us, as well as the public, to sort of hear the facts as they are and appreciate the reality of some of the situation we're in.
Thanks. And we are doing this a little backwards. Do we have any public comment on this item?
I have Sherri Summer.
Hi there. This is Sherri Summer. I live in Louisville. I'm glad you're discussing this topic. I'm glad you're reaching out to citizens. I do have a suggestion. Bree Lehman is a Lafayette resident who has been involved, deeply involved in this subject for several years. She's a leader of the Boulder Quiet Skies group, and I would highly recommend consulting with her if you'd like a lot of details about every facet of this airport. I think as Councilmember Hoffman, Heffner just related, there's a lot of areas where we don't have authority. I think altitude is a tricky one. Time and time again, the FAA will pull the safety card and just say, yeah, the rule is 500 feet, but it's whatever safety demands, which means they kind of have a carte blanche on that one. I think it'd be great to gather time of day data. Night flights are so much more disruptive and so much more harmful to human health, and that would be, I think that'd be a good addition. I kind of hopped into this in the middle of things. I read the packet. I don't see any reference to Boulder County, and I know Superior has a lawsuit in conjunction with Boulder County. And I'm just kind of wondering if we'd have a partnership with them, if we're accessing the resources of Commissioner Stolzmann, who's also just has a prodigious amount of information on this and who's the commissioner liaison to the Rocky Mountain Airport. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sherri. Those are helpful comments. Any other city? I think, I think we do have one.
Evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this topic. I just thought I'd mentioned that through organizing with Westminster City Council and Springfield City Council, I heard this issue come up a number of times. I haven't had the time to study this issue more specifically. I've been focusing all my time on rocket flights, but I thought I would just mention that I did hear concerns from community members in Westminster about contamination issues from the airport. And I, in my capacity, in appearing these members of the community to speak on this issue, I could connect you with members from Westminster and Springfield who have been studying this topic. The more communication between local governments, the better. So I'll just volunteer to help with that follow-up or any discussion.
My suggestion is you pass that on to our city manager, because she can take that and they can assist with that. Sama, thanks. Any other public comment? No? Okay. Back to council. Yes, Councilmember Cooperman?
Just wanted to sort of clarify the idea behind hiring a special counsel. I mean, are we hoping that she will basically provide sort of a complete overview of the legal setting for this issue, like all the possible routes that the city might be able to pursue or not pursue?
In general, yes, for us and for the public to sort of understand where we sit with respect to these issues.
And maybe one other little question. Assuming we hire a special counsel, is there a way, or I guess, is there a way in which council would interact with the council before? I mean, would councilors Kern and Hoffman just interact with her, or would other members also be able to interact with her and ask questions and stuff like that?
I'll tell you, I think the plan was for the task force to interface with her, just to avoid creating a public meeting, but I think if you have specific topics you're interested in, we're, you know, we can certainly get you on the phone with her.
And I would expect as part of her public presentation, she'll be presenting virtually because, you know, she is located out of state. She'll be happy to take questions from all the council members and the public as well.
Anyone else? I stated sort of generally what my understanding of the consensus was. Is there any other comment about that? All right. I think, does the task force feel like they have direction that they need?
We sure do. This is very helpful, and we'll take all these notes into account as we move forward.
Good. All right. So I think the next item on the agenda is purchasing policy updates. Resolution number eight, series 2025, a resolution amending the city of Louisville's purchasing policies and ordinance number 1890, series 2025, an ordinance amending certain sections of chapter 3.08 of the Louisville municipal code pertaining to procurement of goods, services, and contracts for public works. This is second reading, and for public hearing, it was advertised previously on our website, February 7, 2025. So I'm going to open the public hearing and ask for a presentation. Are you going to be presenting on both the resolution and ordinance, just to clarify?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Okay. I think what we'll do is we'll deal with them at the same time. We've, just while they're doing this, because we've got ordinance on the table in this, we'll be taking two rounds of public comments tonight. So again, and it's okay to speak at each of the incidents where we do public comment. You don't, you get a second bite at the apple just as council does to discuss.
Thank you very much for your patience this evening. While I switch this over to my computer. All right. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Ryder Bailey, Finance Director. This evening, I'll be presenting proposed updates to the city's purchasing policy. These updates aim to improve efficiency, modernize outdated thresholds, and ensure compliance with federal procurement requirements. Here's a brief overview of this evening's discussion. Tonight, we'll cover updates to purchasing level authority, changes to the bidding process, clarifications and administrative cleanup, adjustments to insurance specifications in cooperative language, improvements in P-card reporting and sales tax reimbursement, compliance with federal procurement requirements, and we'll be seeking your approval of these proposed changes. The last major update to our purchasing thresholds was in 2015. Staff conducted a survey of 10 peer cities to ensure thresholds align with industry benchmarks and federal procurement guidelines. The goal here is to improve efficiency and reduce city staff time spent on requisitions, which amounted to approximately 52024. It is worth noting that all financial policies and their changes are communicated annually to our external auditing firm. Key proposed changes include raising the threshold for required requisitions from 2,500 to 10,000, allowing P-card purchases up to 10,000, this is also within individual limits, requiring three informal phone or email quotes for purchases between 5 and 10,000, previously this was 2,500 to 10,000, and three written quotes for purchases between 10,000 and 50,000, requiring Finance Director approval. These proposed thresholds are in line with our 10 benchmark cities, ensuring our policy aligns with best practices while improving operational efficiencies. while improving operational efficiencies. There's a lot of numbers on this slide. I'll walk through ours. I would just start with, I think we're still a little bit on the conservative end here when compared to Golden and Lafayette, but we could start here and make adjustments as needed. If you look at the first two rows, you see the Louisville's current purchasing policy summarized in this chart and the proposed, which is what you're hearing down in that second row. Going from left to right, petty cash unchanged, check requests, purchase, the PO levels going from 2,500 to 10,000. See in the third column, PO minimum is going from 25 to 10,000. Phone or informal quotes, previously or currently right now, 2,500 to 10,000 is being increased from 5 to 10. Written bids, from 10 to 25 to 10 to 50,000. Our formal bids is increasing to 50,000 to just under 100. If you look at this column for a moment, you'll see we're a little bit of an outlier here. 50,000 is kind of consistent across our region. It's the, it aligns with our federal government's requirements. And then no changes to the right with council approval at 100,000. So kind of touching on the low end of our purchasing policy. We are recommending adjustments to the bidding process, including increasing the threshold for required bidding from 25,000 to 50,000. This aligns with our federal government rules. Ensuring all former, all formal bids are still posted on the city's official site and BidNet. We're removing some newspaper requirements for posting, and we're adding a verification step to ensure vendors receiving federal funds are not suspended or debarred. To streamline this policy, we are removing specific insurance requirements and referring to agreements approved by our city attorney. We are expanding cooperative purchasing options by limiting, by eliminating limitations on participating entities, adding Sourcewell as an approved entity, and eliminating a cap when it can be used. Continuing on, we're clarifying the process for reporting lost or stolen P-cards. We're softening sales tax reimbursement language to allow for reasonable efforts for reimbursement. We're also removing appendices and attachments and replacing them with links to latest documents, making it a little bit more of a living document. Since the city must follow federal regulations when using federal funding, we are incorporating CFR Part 200 guidelines for uniform procurement compliance. And again, that mandatory vendor verification via SAM.gov, ensuring compliance with federal funding rules. These proposed changes were presented to the Finance Committee on November 21. The committee provided the following feedback. To include a threshold for staff's best efforts to collect sales tax, ensure our external auditors were informed of policy changes, and we received overall support for presenting these updates to City Council for approval. To conclude, staff is seeking your council's approval of these proposed updates to the city's purchasing policy. These visions will enhance efficiency, align with best practices, and ensure federal compliance. I'd like to thank you for your time and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ryder. Any questions, council? Any comments from, well, yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Cooperman.
Thanks. Thanks, Ryder. I was just wondering, the federal requirements, do they only apply to when we spend federal funds?
Councilmember Cooperson, yes, that is, Cooperman, that is correct.
Okay. And are there any similar sort of state requirements? Or no?
There may be, but I'm not aware of them right now. We're home rule, so we, we'll, we'll, yeah. I would add, we did have a state monitoring visit last summer, and they had a chance to review our purchasing policy. Some of their feedback is incorporated into this latest version.
Okay. Thanks.
Other questions? All right, let's take a first round of public comment. No comments? All right, we'll bring it back to council for council discussion. Any comments from the members of the Finance Committee on this? Okay. It's been through the Finance Committees, so I don't necessarily expect that there's any, but... I had one question, and it was in another context that we did this, but it, I noticed that there's some changes, very minimal, that are, that were made to the local preference for, you know, purchasing items from local vendors when possible. And, you know, they have to have a business license and so forth. And I, do, do folks who are not subject to the preference have to have business licenses in Louisville? They don't, right?
Are you asking if you need a, Mayor, are you asking if you need a business license to be a local preferred vendor?
Yeah.
I don't believe so, but let me refer back to the code.
Yeah, I, I'm not as concerned about that as the thing I was going to ask, which is, in terms of those vendors that we do have, and it's going to be mostly local vendors, I think, might we want to make sure not only that they're licensed in Louisville, but that they don't have any tax problems in Louisville with their compliant with our tax code? I don't know that we've ever had anybody in that situation, and I don't want to impose unnecessary burdens on staff, but...
Mayor, I think that's fair feedback. I'm not sure if we've had that happen here. I think giving a local vendor preference is kind of part of the intention of this policy. I don't know if it necessarily needs to define whether they have a license or in good standing, but it's something we could certainly look into.
Yeah, I, I mean, we're on second reading, and I'm reluctant to do that right now. I'd be inquiring for a future look at this. We do change these over time, but I'm, I'm not at this point going to offer anything. Are there other comments or questions? We'll take around, yeah, Councilmember Cooperman.
Just one comment as sort of a follow-up. Not suggesting anything to change at the moment, but if we are updating this in the future, I quite like the local vendor preference. I would also be quite interested in having something in writing about sort of a sustainability preference or a green preference. I know staff really attempts to, you know, purchase items that are more environmentally friendly. I think it would be nice to try to formalize that in some way or another, just as a thought. Thanks.
Yes, I would just like to first thank staff for doing this and getting this updated and make a suggestion that perhaps we could do this on a more regular basis so that it's not going five or 10 years before things get updated. Thank you.
Why don't we take a second round of public comment? Okay. Back to council. Anything else? It sounds like the couple of suggestions that have been made are ones for future look. And I think that's, you know, that, those are, both of them are fine suggestions. And, you know, my concern as well. But for the moment, do we have a motion on resolution? Well, I'll let movement say the whole bit. On the resolution that's before, somebody like to make a motion.
So moved. I should say, okay. I move that we pass Resolution number eight, series 2025, a resolution amending the City of Louisville purchasing policies.
Second.
Okay. Any comments, questions? All right, we just need a voice vote on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next. Do you want to make a motion on the ordinance too?
I move that we pass ordinance number 1890, series 2025, and ordinance amending certain sections of chapter 3.08 of the Louisville Municipal Code pertaining to the procurement of goods, services, and contracts for public works.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll just take a voice, or take a roll call, please.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Partem Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooperman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kern?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
And thank you for all the work. I could see the amount, the number of words that you cut out of all of this was noted. And the simplicity of the process that you're affecting is really admirable, so thank you again. That's the kind of stuff we want.
Appreciate the kind words. Thank you.
Sure. All right, next is an award contract to Blue Spruce Construction Services Republic Library Interior. Do we have a staff presentation?
We do, Mayor. I'd like to invite Kristin Bodine, our Youth Services Supervisor, to share a little bit more information about this project.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Lay and members of council. I'm Kristin from the Library, the Youth Services Supervisor. I'm here with Peggy Norris, who's the Adult Services and Materials Management Supervisor. And we've been managing the carpet and paint project on the library side. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of history about it. In, the library opened in August of 2006, and in that time, there's been no update to carpet and paint. So our carpet and paint are now 19 years old. And we've averaged 600 people a day through the doors of the library. So as you can imagine, that's a lot of wear and tear on the existing carpet and paint. And we have, we're running out of the attic stock that we use to replace things that get stained and all of that as we go through things. The budget for this project was set in 2019 with the plan to execute it in 2020. 2020 happened, there was COVID. The project was canceled for then. And then when it came back up on the CIP schedule, we knew that the, the numbers would have increased. So we actually took some of the scope out of the project. We took all the back of house off of the project, which reduced the scope by about 20%. But then when the bids came in, they were still much higher than the original budget for the project. After the bids came in, we also spent some time doing some value engineering to cut costs further. Our preference for the Blue Spruce as our vendor is because they have a much shorter timeline than our other competing bid, three to four weeks of the library being closed rather than months, several months, so that's why. And they have done library projects in the past. So they have experience moving collections and all of those kinds of things that come into library carpet and paint work. If approved, the project would happen in April. The library would be closed and open for limited services in the lobby. So holds pickup, browsing of new collections. We would do some storytimes, maybe at Steinbach outside to keep some sense of normalcy. So we're asking for council to approve the project in the overage so that we can complete the project this year.
Thank you. Questions, council? Councilmember Kern?
Thank you. Thanks for obviously spending, you know, five, six years. Two things, I'm hoping that, given that we maybe think that it's a 15 to 20-year life on these projects, that we're budgeting and planning. It is a lot of money, right? So it's good to have those funds available. But two, like an environmental point, do we know if Blue Spruce is planning to use, like, no VOC paint and low off-gassing carpet in the project?
Yes, that was part of what we asked for, was the low VOC and low off gas, yeah.
Okay, so it's a low VOC, not a no VOC paint?
I'm not 100% sure on if it's low or no. I think it's low, but we can go back and check.
Okay. And I have to admit, I did try to read through this to find it so that I wouldn't have to. And I, and I apologize if it is in here and I missed it. I'm so sorry. I, I think that, I would just like to know, and I think other people would, there is a significant, even with low VOC off-gassing, that happens in a contained space like the library, unless we're going to do something more to, like, move the air more frequently for maybe the course of like the year after this project to try and help that get out of the, to get out of the air. But otherwise, thank you. Appreciate the work.
Other questions? Councilmember Cooperman?
Thanks. Councilmember Kern asked my first question. And I was just going to mention, that sort of goes back to the comment I made in the last section of the meeting about our purchasing policies. But in any case, I was just curious, the April timing for the project, is that seen as like, this is when the contractor can do the project? Or is this a good time of year to do it, given, you know, how the library is used or anything like that?
It's a combination of things. We originally thought we might be able to do it last October, and that based on getting bids out and design didn't, didn't happen. So some of that was, was that April is ideal. One of our busiest times is the summer and the summer reading program, all of those things. So we want to make sure we're open and ready for that. And so April was the last conceivable time we could do it to be open for that and get the project completed.
And then I was also curious, you mentioned a little bit about how we'll try to keep certain things running. How will the closure impact staff?
Yeah, we do have a lot of different back-of-house kind of plans for staff. We still will have access to the collections. They will be on these, the shelves themselves will be moved out of the way. And so we should be able to still pull holds and shelf books that are returned as part of normal kind of operating. We also have a lot of sort of catch-up back-of-house projects that we're planning on doing. We have some staff trainings that we're hoping to do for all library staff. We are planning on updating some of our patron-facing things, like our book lists. Like I said, we're hoping to still do storytimes on some kind of modified schedule. And we're planning on migrating a lot of our data from our shared files to Teams and doing a lot of training around staff around using Teams and SharePoint. So those are some of the, some of the projects we have for this time.
Good. And then I just had a couple of questions about the library impact fee fund. So I just don't know. So where does the money come from that goes into that fund? And then do we have any sort of minimum balances for that fund that are required?
I was going to say, I know where impact fees come from, developers building. I don't know about minimum requirements.
Councilmember, there is no minimum requirements for our develop impact fee funds, but there is a timing in which you need to spend them. So they have to be spent within a certain duration.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Councilmember Fahy?
Continuing on with Councilman Cooperman's question, do you get funds from the friends of the library that could help with any of these changes?
We do get funds yearly from our foundation. They, it's, but it's, it's a relatively small amount and not an amount that could cover something like this. We get about 50,000. And a lot of that's earmarked for extra programming, collections, eBooks, those kinds of things.
Yeah, the Makerspace and that.
Yeah.
And then how is the departure of our current library director going to impact all of these changes and the staff time?
Yeah, it will be, since Peggy and I have been involved in the project from the beginning, we feel really confident in moving forward even while we're in an interim period. And there will be an interim director of cultural services to kind of help guide the project. So we're still, we're still figuring out what that plan is, but there will be someone there for that and for that guidance. And both of us have spent a lot of time. And both of us have spent a lot of time planning for this. Thank you, councilmember.
Councilmember Cooperman?
Yeah, one more question. So, given that the funds have to be spent in a timely manner and that, as I understand, you reduce the scope, not just with the, the back, the backside of library, but also some of the, some of the stuff where patrons would be to bring down the price. I mean, it, you know, so it says we're going to be leaving a balance of about $76,000, which is about how much would cover those things that were removed from the, from the, the scope. I don't know, like, could you help me understand like why we chose to remove those if we still have these extra funds that do need to be spent at some point? I don't know.
Well, we have thought of other projects that are possibilities for the impact fees. So, there's that. And using impact fees, I feel like was a little bit of a newer thought as we knew the overage was, was happening. So, so those are, those are the reasons. And also, we've removed a lot of the things from the scope sort of once we realized just how much over all of the bids were coming in at. Does that answer the question?
That helps. And maybe, I don't know, maybe Ryder, like, could you say anything about spending the money out of the capital fund versus out of the impact fee funds? Like, just if you?
Certainly. This, this, this capital project was funded entirely out of the capital fund. I think someone mentioned back in 2019. So, now, the, the way to keep this project moving forward is using funding sources from these two different funds.
I guess like, I mean, do you see a, is there a reason to use the impact fee funds as opposed to doing an amendment and drawing on the capital? I mean, to, to fund the full, the extra?
I would say this is a policy decision on which funds. I would, I would say that they are both eligible and it could be drawn from either.
Okay. Great.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Thank you, mayor. I'll invite the finance chair to, to chime in as well. But I know as a committee, we are committed to ensure that we stay on budget that we set. And we worked really hard to have a balanced budget to present to council recently. I, for one, am very grateful for staff in being creative of how do you continue to move this forward while being mindful that council, you know, in an ideal world would approve, you know, the, the estimates for a project in anticipation that those estimates would not swing dramatically between approval and activation of those projects. This one had a very extended timeline. That's not usual. So, thank you for doing that. I'm very appreciative of it. Yeah. I don't, if I misspoke my council members on committees, please correct me, but I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yeah. I'll agree with those comments. You know, finance committee hasn't looked at this particular amendment as you know. And I, I guess I'm struggling a little bit with sort of what is, what does it mean to take this money out of the impact fund? I think that's the, the sort of the piece I'm missing. What are we giving up by doing that? And sort of what's the trade-off? This seems like a project that needs to be done, but I just, I don't totally understand the, the budget impact and what, what it means to take that money from that particular place. So, if that's, if that's something we can get more detail on now, I think that's fine. But I also, I share Councilmember Cooperman's sort of questions about, well, what if we took it from capital fund? What if we took it from somewhere else? And I don't, I'm not totally satisfied based on the memo that we've looked at that analysis.
Councilmember, perhaps I could speak to that a little bit. I mean, you'll recall, we've done extensive analysis of the capital fund through the budgeting process and looking at fund balance reserves. I would say it's a GFOA best practice, but local government best practice to spend dollars with the restrictive funds prior to funds that are, have more eligibility of uses like our capital fund. So, when we saw that this project was coming in with challenges due to its overall costs, I think starting to look towards that impact fee fund was a reasonable approach as opposed to potentially going back to the capital fund. I personally can't speak to the plans of the library, division, and cultural service of potential future uses of these funds. But I would say, from the finance director's position, spending these restrictive funds on eligible projects is generally considered a best practice for local government.
So, I guess my follow-up to that is like, are the impact fund, is the impact fund balance committed in our budget to anything else? I mean, is it totally unrestr, is it totally on budget at this point? It's just $200,000 sitting there?
Yes.
Okay. Hey, that's almost never the answer.
And if I may jump in, Ryder mentioned previously that there's a limited amount of time and it's six years under the city's ordinance. So, that's something to consider as well is that you can't put off spending the impact fee funds indefinitely.
Six years from?
Six years from the time of the, the collection, which is at the time of building permit.
But what's our deadline for spending it?
It's, it would be a rolling deadline as each of building permits are pulled, impact fees are paid. And so, you have six years from the time that they're paid.
Got it.
That's accurate. We track it as it comes in. I would say we've had previous draws in 19, 20, 21. So, it's, it's, it's something that we continue to put eyeballs and monitor. One thing I'd also add is these revenue sources are challenging to predict. They're based on development. So, it's something that we generally spend in arrears once the funding comes in as opposed to the plan of development funding these projects. So, it's generally something you'll, you'll collect first and then appropriate later.
Sorry, I'm going to, I don't want to belabor this too much, but is there money that's currently at risk? Like, if we don't spend it on this, it's going to?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Like?
Let me, let me take.
Within a year, within a couple of years, within three years?
Yeah.
I could certainly give that to you.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, there's $76,000 that's left, right? I think the question I have is like, when does that have to get spent? And maybe it's just a little, you know, a gap that it comes in on a rolling basis. But I think that's the, the question is if it came in early, it might be time to spend it. Okay. Other questions? Anybody else with questions?
Want to take public comment?
I'm going to in just a second. I thought I had, had a question myself, but I think I can hold it. All right. Why don't we take public comment, if any, on this? All right. Bring it back to council. Any, any further thoughts about this? Yes, council, or Mayor Protem?
Yeah. I mean, I'm ready to make a motion if, if you're ready for that. But yeah, I would, I would think it's appropriate to award the contract for this work. Seems like important work. And you guys have figured out a good way to pay for it with funds on hand on top of what was previously budgeted. So, we don't have to mess with our CIP budget. And we're using library funds to pay for a library project and still leaving some funds in there to maybe do something else soon. And I would certainly imagine the $76,000 has been collected in the last couple of years. And so, we'll have some time to spend that 76K over the next few years. So, I, I like everything I see. And I don't know if there's, I mean, it's not, it's not a, just seems like direction here. I mean, I was looking for ordinance or resolution, but you know.
Do we, do we need a motion on this? Yeah. Go ahead.
I move that we award the contract to Blue Spruce Construction Services for Public Library Interior Improvements.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. Thanks. Our next item is an executive session concerning pending litigation. And I'll throw it to our city attorney.
Thank you, mayor. As noted on the meeting agenda, I'm requesting an executive session for the purpose of consultation with an attorney representing the city with respect to pending litigation pursuant to Section 5-2D of the City's Home Rule Charter and CRS Section 2464024B. Prior to entertaining any motion, the city clerk will read a statement required by the city code.
It is the policy of the city to conduct public business meetings open to the public. While in executive session, it is inappropriate to take straw votes, keep minutes, or make any final decisions. It's the duty of each council member to ensure executive sessions are conducted in strict compliance with this ordinance, state and federal law, and any applicable provisions of the state and federal constitutions. If at any time the scope nature or parameter of this executive session goes beyond the publicly stated topic, it's the responsibility of the city council to terminate and cease any further deliberation within the executive session and return to the public meeting. Only those topics described in city ordinances may be discussed in an executive session. Those topics are summarized as follows. Where federal or state law requires the information being discussed remain confidential, certain personnel matters involving only employees directly appointed by the city council and other personnel matters upon request of the city manager or mayor, consideration of auto rights and real property acquisitions and dispositions, but only as to appraisals, value estimates, and strategy, and legal consultation with an attorney representing the city with respect to pending litigation.
Regarding the authority for the executive session, Section 5-2D authorizes an executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation. An executive session for this purpose is also authorized by the Open Meetings Law, Section 2464024B of the Colorado Revised Statute. The request involves discussion of potential litigation involving a city contract. With that, mayor, you may entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Okay. I would move that we go into executive session. In a second.
Second.
Mayor, may I read the rest of the motion from the?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, the motion is to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation. And the executive session will also include interim city manager, Sama Fox, interim deputy city manager, Meredith Muth, finance director Ryder Bailey, and city attorney Kathleen Kelly.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
The only comment I would make is for those who are still here, you're welcome to stay because we do have, we'll have a report at the end of the meeting and then a final couple of items. But by no means do I want to, you know, let you know that we're going to be back immediately because it sometimes takes a little bit.
Mayor, we need a roll call. We need a roll call vote.
That's what I was doing next. Go ahead.
Councilmember Cooperman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Kern?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahey?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahey?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammer?
Yes.[212.98]
We're back on. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, as noted on the meeting agenda, the executive session was for the purpose of discussing pending litigation, and the City Council had such discussion. No further action is requested at this time.
Thank you. Does the City Attorney have a report on her own tonight?
City Attorney does not. Thank you.
Identification of future agenda items. Councilmember Fahey, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yes, I would like to propose that we have a future agenda discussion about the Rocky Mountain Greenway Trail through Rocky Flats. I would like to discuss whether or not we would have a proposal to oppose that construction.
I think there was a discussion about needing to do that, or within the next two weeks, if we can fit it on the schedule?
If it could be, if it could happen a week from today, or two weeks from today, would be the very latest, but a week from tonight would be best.
How are councilmembers with that? Do we have thumbs up on that, any to put it on the agenda?
I'm fine with coming back. We'll obviously address it when it's in front of us.
Yeah, I just want to make sure people are comfortable.
I'm sorry, did you say you want the March 4th meeting, or the February 25th?
Curious about what else we have planned.
We have, the March 4th meeting would be the next one. That would be ideal. Could we add it to a study session on the 25th?
We'd have to make that a special meeting to do that. We already have two items scheduled that night. That should be, it's up to you guys. If we added it to the fourth, there's two proclamation, there's a proclamation, Life in Lewisville Awards, Home Hardening, Second Reading, CHIPS Designation, and Ironton, the temporary use permit for Ironton, and the voltage concept plan.
I would say the fourth would be the absolute latest date because of the timeframe that the rest of the county and cities are working with to come up with a joint decision on this.
I mean, does anybody have any problem with that? Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Haffner.
Yeah, I would just note that it is a, both an extremely complicated and controversial topic, and I can imagine it taking up, you know, a fair amount of our time to sort of get ourselves engaged and up to speed and conversant in the facts such that we can make some sort of informed decision. I assume the point would be to consider a resolution regarding the Greenway Trail, and I just, I just want to be mindful of all the other work we have to do. I'm not saying let's not do it, I do just want to be mindful of our agenda and the time that it could take.
Councilmember Hallington.
And as a follow-up to that, does it have to be a resolution, or is there some other way in which we can learn about this and decide where the council stands? Because that is a packed meeting, and I feel like if we're going to add it there, we have to take some things off of that meeting, so.
Well, it's also potentially going to require some staff time and all that, too. I mean, it's not, I don't know of any particularly good vehicle for doing this. I mean, it's not a proclamation, for example. I mean, what we're doing is call it a proclamation and put it on consent, but, and then see if anybody takes it off, but that's not really, I'm not sure that's really a good way of doing it. Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'd like to add, we do not currently have staff expertise in this topic, so if council is looking for a robust educational session, that's going to take us some time to prepare. If you'd like us to provide existing information that's available, then you can consider yes or no, whether you'd like to pursue a resolution, that's something we can do in relatively short order.
Councilmember Cooperman.
Just the, to clarify, so the county is having some kind of hearing early in March. Is that just for public comment, or are they actually making any kind of?
No idea.
Do we know? Because, I mean, if it's only a comment period, right, you know, I don't feel like it's necessary for us to make a statement prior to that.
I agree. I don't understand, I mean, like, we heard from a concerned individual that, like, there is a deadline for the county, but I don't think we understand exactly, like, why should we meet, have a resolution done before that meeting? What would be the need for it? Does it help facilitate that along? And also, like, when is, when is the green belt plan to, like, move forward? Like, do we have enough time to impact, you know?
The county is the one that's going to install the green belt.
Not Boulder County.
Yeah. Boulder County and.
Jefferson. It's not in Boulder County.
But Boulder County is going to work in conjunction with Jefferson County to put in the pathway, because it connects to Superior in Boulder County.
I want to be careful, this isn't on the agenda, I don't want to get too far afield. I think we need kind of an up or down about whether we want to put it on the agenda or not.
Like to learn more.
I'm hearing, I'm hearing, it sounds like an interesting thing to look into, but that for our bandwidth and our immediate interest, that it really doesn't rise to the level of something that ought to jump ahead of a bunch of other items. Is that what I'm hearing? Yeah, okay. Generally, as a consensus, not, not as a unanimity. No, no, I understand. All right. I think, any other items? Yes, Councilmember Cooperman.
Yeah. I would like us to revisit our Section 8.08 in the municipal code on weeds. And on the list of weeds, I'm interested in having us remove any species that are native to the region. I don't feel like this is something that is pressing, right? People are not going to be planting for, you know, a few months, but I, I'm hopeful that we can just have a, you know, just review that list of weeds, excise things or that are, or appropriately defined things that are native or not native, and maybe just do that in a fairly simple, straightforward way.
That can be done administratively? Do we need a?
Yeah, there, there are certainly impacts to a code change like that. I do not know what all of those impacts are, just sitting here right now. I think that is something that would take some council consideration. It would involve multiple teams on our staff, like open space and community development, which I think we'd want to be thoughtful of where it falls in our priorities, so we're thinking through how much effort and time it takes for those groups compared to the projects we are urgently prioritizing for them right now.
One, one thought comes to mind about that, is that we're getting ready to do, or maybe it's happening already, strategic plan for at least the open space, right? And maybe as a follow-on to that, that might be something that they might consider at that time, to the extent that that effort may result in some legislative changes that we might want to consider at some point.
Sure, theoretically, any number of things could be a result of our long-range parks and open space plan.
Yeah, I just want to speak in favor of the suggestion. I don't, I don't think our ordinances on weeds are terribly complicated. You can't have weeds over 12 inches, and this would be, I think, modifying the list of plants that can't grow over 12 inches. I mean, I, I don't think it's hours and hours of analysis, and I think Councilman Cooperman, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, has one particular current weed in mind that may or may not actually be a weed.
I don't, yeah, I, I think, my own feeling about this is, we need to get this done soon. And I would hope there'd be a way of dealing with this that could be brought to us in, without much effort and much discussion, and, yeah. Councilmember Kern.
Director Blackmore actually has given comment on this very specific weed, and it is more complicated than you would think, based on that, so I am happy to forward that communique to Sama, who can then send it to other members of council.
Is there consensus for putting this on a future agenda, or is this not? I don't, I don't feel strongly enough about it to say. You know. We've got seven people. How many thumbs up? Oh, there's. Are you a? And how many ups? Three. And I think it fails from by that.
So my comment is, I'm fine getting more information about it and seeing if it should come, like, again, we're not putting something on the agenda today. So Councilmember Cooperman is suggesting that this is a potential future agenda item. I'd love to get more information from staff as to what that would mean. Like, I'm not saying, yes, put it on our next agenda first thing before anything else, or delay till September. I'm saying, oh, okay, you want that on our agenda, let's get some information about how much time that would take and whether it should be on there, and, and then we can have a conversation about whether this comes back to agenda or not.
Well, it makes it enough of an interest to send some information, whatever information is out there, and we'll decide in a future date whether it goes on the agenda or not. Any other comment here before we move to adjourn? I'm going to move to adjourn tonight.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
We have two, two seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Aye.
Good. Thanks.